So ladies and gentlemen, I think we have a quorum at the table. Let's go ahead and get started. As a point of introduction, and I would like to thank our Assistant Superintendent for Facilities for being here today. He has been, he and Mr. Sneed have been doing the yeoman's work on this effort and spent many, many evenings out at the Government Center with the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission. For those of you, we raised this issue, or we made you aware last year that the Schools Committee was working with the School Board on giving us additional flexibility in the planning and zoning for schools of the 21st century, and there were changes made then. Also last summer, in the context of our joint retreat between the School Board and the Board of Supervisors, there was a recognition that there needed to be closer collaboration between the work being undertaken by the school system and the efforts of the Planning Commission. So over the course of a number of meetings that started in January with a deadline of the end of January, which we stretched out a bit, both Chairman Evans and I attended meetings at the Schools Committee, and the end result is the work plan before you. The work plan does essentially have a focus on those efforts, those collaborative efforts that the School Board and the Planning Commission will undertake over the next three years, and there are six topics addressed in it. Those include projection methodologies, school proffers, the impact of development on schools, school planning and economic development, Fairfax County Public Schools as a contributor to economic development and equity and access to schools and facilities. You have the work plan before you. The Planning Commission adopted it in February, and the Board of Supervisors adopted it at the next, the meeting subsequent to their February 8th meeting, and we would like to get the support of the full School Board at this point. Mr. Plattenberg, do you have more you want to offer on this?
Well, just exactly that. I mean, this was really an outcropping of your original meeting on October 18th in 2016 with both the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, and really as a part of your land use priorities identified in that joint retreat. So as was stated, you know, it was an outcropping of that. We've gone through a pretty diligent process. I know there'll be questions regarding the timeline associated with this, because there aren't really timelines in there, but you know, we'll address that as a part of the group, because each one of these may take a little bit of time to kind of get through. And we were pretty pleased that everybody was able to come to consensus on this document. With that, I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Strauss.
Okay, Mr. Plattenberg, does this document, does this help Fairfax County Public Schools? Do you have any professional suggestions as we try to work collaboratively with the Board of Supervisors and planning and et cetera? Do you have any specific recommendations?
No, not really. I mean, I think what really, you know, when we start talking about each of these different topics, we've had individual work sessions on the majority of these. Except for the one that really goes into a little more detail about the economic prowess that Fairfax County Public Schools provides and what a significant contributor to the economic engine. So I think that'll be a healthy discussion. I think the end result of bringing most people along is really what these conversations are about. I was a little reticent at the beginning for the intent and purpose of these things, because I feel oftentimes we'd like to have these similar conversations about all agencies within the county, especially when we talk about one Fairfax and so forth, not just schools. But that being said, anytime we get the opportunity to articulate what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it, and pretty much, you know, take everything apart and show people the depth and breadth, I think it's beneficial. I think there's some good things in here. I don't, I don't know that I would really add anything to it, because I think within each one of these topics, if you look at it as an outline, and that's kind of how we came to this document. It was somewhat fragmented, and then we started putting things where they belonged with each, into these subject headings.
So two, do then, questions. First, obviously, one of our longtime concerns is not concentrating high poverty in one area, as they do land use, and you know, first whether or not this will help or have no impact at all on concentrations of poverty in geographic regions. And then the second is, will this help for us to plan better for co-located facilities, as we were talking about this morning? Because in order to really do a co-located facility, it needs enough running time to either have the land that's required, or the amount of funding that's required, the appropriate building. In other words, if we, you know, when we're in the position of having to build something ASAP, then it's difficult. So time for co-located facilities and help at all with helping to sort of disperse a little bit the housing stock.
Well, I think, to technically answer your question, I don't know that it specifically talks about the co-location within this document, its combines, but we did have initial conversations about all of our schools and basically the type of schools, and they've adopted language about vertical schools that was a part of the precursor to this, and it was almost concurrent. And that's where our first committee came together with both Ms. Evans and also representative from Mount Vernon area. I mean, we basically sat down there with Karen Corbett Sanders and Sandy Evans and went through what it was that we needed to have the comprehensive master plan acknowledge the types of building and structures that we already have. So in that respect, I would say yes, it allows for us to co-locate, because they acknowledged vertical school. There are zoning elements that are, that surround your question, so that's why I was a little reluctant to give you a direct answer on, you know, it specifically talked about the zoning language and how that would accommodate it. But it did that work, that pre-work that we did, that's not really reflected in here, but was reflected and adopted by the county, and the Planning Commission does provide for the vertical school. And then the other question?
Well, again, sort of our, it's, it's, Ms. Dana Kowick, she spoke about it this morning, a concentration of high-poverty housing in, in, in a geographic region. In other words, can we have just a more balanced community planning outlook?
I know there is some discussion that took place regarding workforce housing, subsidized housing, and making sure there was a distributed component of those elements, but I think Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders had some comments you want to make.
Yeah, I think there are a couple of different areas in which that was addressed. One is under the subheading of equity and access, and the importance of taking a longer-term view. In the past, as you may know, the way the Planning Commission worked is they worked at looking at, looking at each individual project as a standalone project. And in the course of our meetings with them, they understood that they really need to look at it as an aggregate, and especially in places where there is an economic renewal plan in place. The other piece of it is the importance of looking at proffers, because as you all know, last year, the Richmond adopted a new proffer law, which was very restrictive in many ways, and the push from within the Planning Commission is to better understand how we have addressed proffers in the past and what flexibility we need. And so, Mr. Sneed, I see him in the back there, was meeting with them last week and talking about the importance of, you know, one of the things that we had them do is disaggregate what the capacity of our buildings are as standalone buildings, then add on the modulators as a separate category, and then the trailers. And so that should give more, a greater understanding to the Planning Commission when they adopt a, a new application or approve a new application, that they need to look at that application in the context of the other ones that they've also approved.
So really, in summary, it was both in the equity and access, but it was also in our projection methodologies components of this. The student yields were in the production methodology.
Then my, my last question is that when we get reports back that show the student yield based on, on something that the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have approved, unless you keep a pretty good folder on, on each one of those, it is, you don't understand what all has been approved. And I mean, we see it in our yearly CIP, but as that is coming down, the one page that is in the CIP this year, which I don't believe we've had before, were the proposed sort of hotspots of, of, of potential redevelopment that have not been approved yet, which is very important, because then for our planning purposes, it's a very different way to look at it in that way than just project by project by project, you know, five students here, 10 here, 20 there. Well, we've figured out, you've gotten a whole region where it's like that.
Well, it is, Ms. Strauss, you mentioned exactly one of the comments that came up from some of the Planning Commissioners. They were, they were amazed and realized that this dialogue, this conversation was allowing for those opportunities for them to have a realization of the true impact. And so it really opened up a whole vein of conversations around the proffers, around the yields, around equity and access. And, and, and that's true, that was the other thing they mentioned, was the age of the facilities. Now, you heard Dr. Presidio talking about the goal this morning, and this one Fairfax one that's referenced in here as well, for earlier childhood education and so forth. And you know, that, those conversations are comprehensive, because they go in direct conflict with the capacity we currently don't have in certain regions that we'd like to have. But by having them in this context, it allows everybody to see, you can't just push on this one end of the balloon without it pushing out on the other end. One thing, somebody asked about what wasn't in here. So the one thing that I would suggest to you is a financing mechanism, and we've been down that road before, but that's the only thing upon reflection that I saw that we have an opportunity. But there's enough in here to get us all to the table, move it in the right direction. We've had those conversations about funding in the past, and I think that's going to be our next challenge as we move forward, once we get through an understanding across all levels.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this, and it's a step in the right direction. Rather than everybody having a different piece of the elephant to look at, at least maybe we're going to be able to all see the entire elephant all at once, which certainly helps for, for planning and for funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's a lot of work, and I think this communication is, you know, much needed. And I think we've been well represented on this committee by our, obviously, Ms. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, but also by you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Thank you. I know you have a lot of experience in this area. I, and you probably mentioned this, but I just want to make sure I understand. This is a work plan, meaning that the School Board will get reports on each of these over how much time? What's the plan?
The plan is for three years. The, what happened was the, after our retreat last fall, there were a series of outcomes, and different organizations were tasked with those outcomes to develop a work plan, and our work plan is for three years.
All right. Thank you.
So I have Tom and then Tammy.
Thank you, Karen. So some of, I'm just, my, some of my questions initially are just sort of to understand what I'm looking at. So the Planning Commission has a Schools Committee, if I understand correctly, and then there's also a School Board, there was a School Board Working Group that interacted with the Schools Committee to come up with this, is that?
There is a representative to the Schools Committee.
So what is the School Board Working Group? What is that? That's mentioned in the cover letter, the first sentence. Is the work plan developed and proposed by the Schools Committee/School Board Working Group?
I don't think that was an accurate representation. We don't have a School Board Working Group.
Okay. So there's the Schools Committee?
Correct.
And, and, and does the School Board, is, is there somebody that has, we have, the School Board has two representatives, and that's you and?
Ms. Evans.
And Ms. Evans. Is there anyone else from staff that participates in that?
Just Mr. Sneed and I. Of course, these topics may require us to bring in other staff to participate in the conversation.
Okay. And so the, the Schools Committee was charged by the Planning Commission to come up with this work plan? So as I look at the work plan, is the work plan, is it prioritized so that the first priority is projection methodologies?
Yeah, that's an interesting point, because that was a lot of the conversation, you know, and as I mentioned, and as this cover letter mentions in the last, actually, the last sentence. This work plan addresses the land use priorities identified during the joint retreat. Now, that was your retreat with the Board of Supervisors. As far as the prioritization that you're asking about with this plan, those were really in the conversations about which would be a natural flow from the beginning down to get an understanding. And I think when we started tackling these conversation points within the two groups with the help of not only the School Board member representatives that were there, the Planning Commissioners, the county staff, and us, we were trying to see, okay, what, what could we, this is a pretty monumental task. Each of these conversations are pretty in-depth, and as I said, we've had work sessions on almost every single one of them, actually. And those work sessions have taken a series of time, and then had follow-up work sessions. I remember two years ago, we had a work session every month on one of these topics or another, and then sometimes a follow-up work session to conclude it. So it was really to look at, okay, what are our methodologies? Along with those methodologies, what comes out of that, and what's the outcropping? Well, that's the yields, and our projection based upon those methodologies, gaining an understanding of those methodologies, understanding of the yields, disparate understanding, some of the topics that were brought up that we couldn't really get our, our heads around was, you know, when facilities age, I know that's one thing Ms. Evans had been asking about for quite some time, when they age and then they turn over, if they're 20 years, what, how do we project for that? Well, we don't. We have an annual review, as you know, with the CIP, but we don't have necessarily a really good methodology for that. And then the proffers, the proffers are directly attributed to any new growth and any new yield and any new development that we identify. We had a discussion about proffers here, and I think Mr. Moon did an excellent job of giving us a historical perspective on how the schools finally got to the table, because for a long time, we hadn't been. And so it seems like a, a natural, now, somebody could argue and say the impacts of the development on schools could have been before the methodologies or after the methodologies, because that impact of the development could go into school proffers. But it was the consensus of the group, really, more so than taking any kind of formal adoption as to which the priorities are on board to be in here.
The other aspect of it is that through the good graces of both Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Sneed, they're doing a lot of education of the Planning Commissioners on how we actually do these things, and that's been an eye-opening experience for each of the Planning Commissioners, because I think they had some misconceptions about the accuracy of our projections, but also they didn't understand the impact of, you may have a piece of land that's zoned for a certain level of development. Well, with the revitalization of that land, it may not change the zoning for it, but it would change the yield for our schools. And so really, they're spending, doing yeoman's work on educating the Planning Commissioners on the impact of some of their decisions on our schools, and why we need to be very judicious in the planning process.
Yeah, but Mr. Wilson, you raise a good point. I mean, again, it says this is the recommended work plan and accompanying materials. It took this team, this group that was working together, quite a number of meetings, to get the recommended work plan together. In terms of the priority, and where, I think that kind of feedback could be fruitful. If there's a desire by this body to say, hey, you know, the economic success or the impact of FCPS should be number one, and then development, number two, and potential development, and then the impact in yield, and then the subsequent school of that residential or commercial development impact, you know, I'm open for anything, and to provide any additional feedback back to the body from this group, but you know, it really is just to kind of report out and get any feedback whatsoever. It may be that the group says, you know, look, we can look at this nine ways to Sunday, and we can all come up with different prioritization. It was the key part, the key mission that we had was really coming up with work plan that we are recommending, that we look into.
Okay, so I'm just still trying to, to understand the, the, within the Planning Commission, then there's the Schools Committee. So when I look at the executive summary, it says the Working Group will address the development of long-term projection methodologies. So is that some other group, or is that really just the Schools Committee? So when they, when it's, because this is, I just want to make sure, because this is number one of the focus of each topic section in the executive summary, it says the Working Group will address, and the Working Group is just really just constituted by the Schools Committee, whoever's on the membership of the schools, not a subgroup is working on it. Okay. I'm struck by sort of the scope of what's in here. Do you have a sense of whether the Schools Committee can grapple with this as constituted? I mean, is, is, I mean, do we have, do you have the resources and the time with the number of people that are on it to try to, that's why I was sort of getting into what was the priority, like how did you figure out it in terms of the timeframe? And it's a multi-year project, I understand, but it does seem quite challenging.
If I could, I don't think the idea is that the Schools Committee itself will be grappling with these issues. They were tasked with putting together a work plan on these issues, and so this is something that the Board of Supervisors and the School Board is supposed to be working on jointly.
Okay. Hmm, okay, so, but maybe I'm misunderstanding then the executive summary, because if I look at the, like, the number, there's the, it lists the six topics, then it says the focus of each topic, and then if you go into number one, it says the Working Group will address the development of long-term projection methodologies.
Correct. The vehicle for getting the work done, to crystallize it, will be the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission, and these are things that will take input from the School Board, or actually from FCPS, as they do their work. So for example, Jeff and his team have spent a lot of time talking about their projection methodologies and educating the Schools Committee on the projection methodologies that Fairfax County Public Schools uses. But the Planning Commission really has not spent much time, if any, on dealing with the issues of life cycle, life cycles of housing, demographic trends, the aging of our housing stock, and so it's raising that awareness to them in their, so that this can inform their decision-making going forward. And so from my perspective, what this really is doing is pushing them to be much more proactive and schools-oriented when they make these decisions.
And also, that was exactly what, on the actual verbatim excerpt, the reading of the verbatim excerpt says, "The Planning Commission Schools Committee was tasked with undertaking the prioritization of the issues under the land use category, and to present a work plan to both the Board of Supervisors and the School Board." But really is to present this plan, go into this, and then to go ahead and present that plan forward to both bodies.
Okay, so, so, and I'll, I'm gonna end my questions here, but, so, looking at the executive summary, I'm not sure what page this is, it doesn't, no page, oh, page three. It says, "The Schools Committee/School Board Working Group anticipates presenting their findings to the Board on each topic they address." And will that be a joint, a presentation to a joint, at a joint board meeting? Is that what you're anticipating, or would it be separate presentations?
Well, that's certainly up to the governing bodies, you know. I would think that it would be under the same joint meeting that we've been talking about. These things, you know, we have the lines of business, this is kind of an outcropping of that same process and the procedures that we have associated with that.
And is there?
Ahead and on the back.
Is it, there's no schedule for that? Okay.
No. And then, again, this is three years.
Right.
So we're looking at, there's a CIP component in that element, so perhaps this would fit into that portion whenever that will be discussed and sprinkled throughout. But it hadn't been developed yet, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
So I have Tammy, and then Megan, Illyon, and Elizabeth. Tammy?
So this is a three-year working group, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And this came out, this is one of, this came out from the memo that after we had our joint board meeting, then our joint retreat in July, and then the after we had our joint board meeting, then our joint retreat in July, and then the following, like, November, December, Sharon sent out a memo that said, "All of these things are going to be developed." Okay.
It was a board matter.
Okay, it was a board matter from Sharon Boliva to us, correct? To our board?
That their board approved.
That their board approved, okay. All right, so I just want to kind of follow the trail there. All right, I think this is a wonderful opportunity, provided we use it correctly. When I look at items five and six, I couldn't be happier that there are, in this work plan, going to be conversations between Jeff, you and your team, and their team. Because so many of these things, we end up in this budget cycle that we're in with this chronic underfunding, with this not understanding of some of the things I spoke about before. And really, it's so frustrating for me, as a board member here, to sit here and talk about our, and this is talked about in other items, you know, the commercial, you know, the, the commercial development, right? What's happening there? Every year, we say, there's commercial properties, they go unrented, and we find that Nestle comes to Arlington. I don't know, where was Fairfax on there? I, I don't know. But, you know, Arlington just got Nestle. So I think these kinds of things are things that I want to know about as a board member who is, who really does not have any funding authority, but has to accept whatever comes before me. And I also am very curious, and very, as I spoke before, section number, number six is the socioeconomic segregation of our county. It is unbelievable at this point. And we refuse to address that, we refuse to acknowledge it, and it can't continue. It cannot continue. So if this working group can be the vehicle to open up those tough conversations that I talked about when we were talking earlier about budget, then I welcome that. And I think you and Mr. Sneed are perfect people, along with Ms. Evans, to do that, but I would certainly be willing to, I just want to make sure we're all aware, and if we can sit in on some of these meetings, because these could be some of the most important coming through this working group. Because this is how we, how, I don't understand, they have a strategic plan, but I don't understand how they are trying to attract businesses to this county. I don't understand about the commercial properties that are, go unrented and are uninhabitable, I believe Mr. Long said, he goes, basically, they're just, and, and, and so, those are questions, because we are obsolete, and it was a huge amount, too. It was a huge percentage, obsolete. So because we are the, yeah, it was, it was outrageous. It was outrageous. And because we are the main socioeconomic driver in the county, because we've also heard from, and this, this is getting, well, I don't want to go down that, I was thinking another area, but I, I think these are very, very important conversations that we haven't broached in any joint meeting that we've had. And this working group can start those conversations. Between this, the One Fairfax, you know, resolution, and the things that Skip addresses, I, I see some nice braiding of conversations that can occur, and I'm appreciative of the hard work that you've already done to get these items on the charts. So, you know, just count me in to any conversations, I'd be happy to help.
So I, I would like to just echo support for what Ms. Kofak shared and what others have as well. We, we hear piecemeal, different things happening around the county that have to do with planning. I remember multiple dialogues with Ms. Evans about what was going on in Mason District, and even though it's not my district, I was getting incensed myself about the Williston site. And here we are, trying to alleviate overcrowding in our schools, and we simply cannot operate as two separate boards, two separate entities. It is one county. And actions on, in one of our major government agencies impacts the other. And you think about Route One and some of the development that's going on down there, we know the tipping point studies and the research all behind it, and yet it feels like too often, there's these decisions being made in a vacuum. So the fact that the planning commission and this really comprehensive group of bringing people from the school board and the school system, as well as county employees, to really sit down here and say, how do these, you know, intersect with one another? How does one impact the other? You know, Mr. Wilson, I think maybe you might have talked about it in your remarks, it's pretty ambitious. And I really worry sometimes if we overcomplicate things, how well can we get to them? So I think, based on what I saw here, Ms. Kofak, you really kind of talked to it, it was number six, in your equity and access to schools and facilities, but when you're looking at, are we having social segregation, and what are the impacts socio-economically, depending on what kind of developments going on? We have got to be intentional at this point. And being in a county of a million people, with some of the top Fortune 500 companies in, in the entire United States housed here in Fairfax County, they have deep faith that the Board of Supervisors, and certainly in the school board, that we're minding the shop and we are helping to operate this public entity. And this, to me, is probably the closest we've come in a long time of saying, all right, you can talk a good game about One Fairfax, but now how do we intentionally lay out some of the work and understand, no more stovepipes? You know, FCPS is trying to move away from stovepipes within its individual departments, and we got to do the same thing, no more stovepiping to operate a county of this magnitude. So I do appreciate everybody's hard work in it, but I really do hope that we'll continue to look at, how do we tangibly get to this work without it just becoming a lot of, again, sort of lofty ideals, lofty rhetoric, but what's, what's the work behind it? And, and I would leave it to Mr. Plattenberg and your county, your, you know, your counterparts on the county side. Hold the two boards accountable. As you guys are trying to work through things, if you run into stumbling blocks with each other about everybody understanding, again, what does this mean by shared work? Please come let us know. I hope they'll come let their, their supervisors know, because in the end, accountability is going to rest with the 22 of us who were elected to serve in this role. And I think that we've got incredible talent on the planning commission as well, and I'd love to see many of them, including Tim Sargent, bringing their voices and, you know, maybe they're kind of like the Park Authority was on the turf task force, they get to be kind of the one in the middle that says, all right, let me corral everybody together and understand this is what this really means here, but this is a good sign.
Thank you. I have Illyon, Elizabeth, and Dahlia, and we are right up to the five o'clock deadline, so as.
I think this, this was briefly mentioned by, I believe, Mr. Plattenberg, but this is not something that's in the work plan document, but, you know, from my perspective, the most important discussion, you know, we need to have, and that's incumbent upon is the school board, 12 of us on the board, a, a, you know, pushing, you know, our colleagues on the other side, on the county board of supervisors, is that annual capital budget of $155 million, that's, that's an arbitrary number, arbitrary number. You know, we may have, you know, county as a whole, you know, may have the maximum amount of capital funding it can spend in a given year, but just giving us exactly the same number, 155 every year, that's completely arbitrary. And, and we do have to look at the, for the whole county, what is more important in a given year? What is going to be, I mean, I bring back, it's trailer issues again, whether, whether, you know, addressing the issues of close to 1,000 trailers we have, where we educate more than 20,000 kids versus building a brand-new, brand-new miniature building for the county side. We have to, we have to compare, which one is more important? And that discussion we need to have, and we need to force that, to have that conversation.
We have shared with them the list of trailers, as well as modulators, as a first step on that one, so you know you've got.
And, and we should suggest them to use 1,000 trailers for their work, their offices.
Okay, I appreciate that. Elizabeth?
Yeah, we have a $2.8 million line item in facilities just for moving or acquiring trailers. Is it my understanding that, and maybe this is a little bit trying to get to the heart of the matter of what Mr. Wilson was talking about, when, when I look at the, the executive summary, the, the takeaway that I have, that I'm trying to understand, is, is it keeps saying, "The working group will, the working group will." So even though you've already met, this is a constituted working group for, for, for three years. And you are going to periodically meet over time and address each of these. So I'm starting on page, well, it's like an attachment, page two of the attachment, or page three of the attachment? Yeah, page two. So it says, "Here's the focus of each topic." Are these listed ordinarily so that, so first you're going to tackle one, then you're going to tackle two? Or are you just gonna, is it going to be symbiotic and that as they need, you're gonna?
No, it's ordinarily.
Okay. So then, so then I'm right back to where I've always been, and it is the one thing for me that's missing, and it's a grave gap. And Mr. Moon touched on it, but I've run these numbers before. I think it's inverse, that we're about 60-something, 65% of the total square footage of taxpayer infrastructure in the county. But we get about 35% of the funding. They're about 35% of the infrastructure, they get about 65. Is that about right, or, you know, ballpark?
That's called opportunity, yes.
Okay, so that's where the gap is, for me. And, and that is a negotiation opportunity to have a very real discussion about how our facilities are used, when you've got 27.7 million square feet of taxpayer infrastructure, and the community use aspect, the 24/7 practically usage, as opposed to an office building that is, you know, lightly used by, you know, office workers between, you know, roughly seven o'clock in the morning and four o'clock in the, pardon me for being li- little, little bit cheeky, but, but that's a light use. And to me, there's got to be some kind of formulaic development for calculating, and I know there is some in the industry, I mean, I'm not saying that there isn't any, but I'm saying to my colleagues, this is where the opportunity comes in. And I know Ms. Evans is playing, you know, circus manager, because we have things happening behind the scenes, but I have sent a request to have a CPDC meeting, which has always been somewhat defunct. And I think that potentially, and Ms. Evans would have to come to you and the, and the vice chair and direction of the board, but I think this is the opportunity for maybe reconstituting CPDC in some fashion to be, you know, a liaison, because this says school board working group, and not to diminish your role at all, but it's almost as if, you know, we need to keep this conversation going, and we need to have a strategic plan of our board of how we want to tackle this in terms of how we see the impact. Because there's a heavy hand of the Board of Supervisors in the development of these priorities and the laying out of these priorities. I want ours. And, you know, it's the, it's the 1,000 trailers, it's my, you know, 6,241 seats and sack rooms that we could recapture some space. So, you know, and I, I can take it up with the chair about, and I've called the CPDC meeting, you'll get the, the message for it, but potentially now leveraging CPDC to maybe take on some of these weighty tasks, so that our side of, of the facilities argument remains strong as this working group continues forward.
And I can say, I, you know, I certainly welcome that. I think CPDC needs to see, you know, first of all, what it is, and this gives us an opportunity to say, this is the task, you know, this, to CPDC, this basically is CPDC's work plan now, if, if the board.
Wills it.
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, we, we could basically, you know, agree.
So Dahlia?
Yes, thank you. I will be very brief. Just looking at this wonderful work, I'm wondering, reinventing the wheel here, I know we're, we're unique, but I'm sure there are other counties around the nation that have gone through some of these changes and shifts from basically being quite agrarian to suburban to quite urban. So I don't, can I assume, or have we, has this group reached out, working with policy experts or developers or urban planners who have done similar work that has worked in other areas?
It's not my knowledge that they've brought in any kind of external group to facilitate, defer to the other members that have been there, but it's been pretty much, you know, extension of that joint meeting. What was stated that we received from the chairman, she had sent over her, the concluding remarks about what were the areas, land use was mentioned on it, so was CIP. Then the reporting back was that this group was going to go ahead and work together to give the identification of what it is, and then also provide a recommendation within the three years, I think it says February 7th or something like that, 2017, to address the issues identified under the land use priorities. How that's done, it didn't, just like the conversation in the CPDC, certainly if that's a recommendation of the body, that CPDC investigate perhaps addressing or approaching the county or this working committee to say that this is bigger and that's what the desire would be, you know, that's not my, my place. I certainly welcome any and all. But again, three years seems like a long time, but the broader we get this scope, I'm just happy to have the opportunity to have the conversation, to make the awareness, to provide the information, so that decisions that are subsequent are informed decisions, taking into account all of the comments that have been made here. So there, there is a holistic view about this one decision in isolation having a much broader impact on all of the areas that were discussed.
I appreciate, so I, I would just recommend, whether it's through, you know, experts in CPDC or outside groups, that we do reach out and try to get, you know, support if that hasn't been thought about.
So the schools committee actually did invite outsiders to participate in the process from the planning commission piece. We are not members of the schools committee, but we are representatives to the schools committee. And the thing that I would suggest both Chairman Evans and myself did quite often was to try to ensure and protect the role of the school board versus, you know, the planning commission taking on more and more responsibilities. And so as Mr. Plattenberg has explained, one of the great values has been that the planning commissioners are now much more cognizant of the work that gets done within Fairfax County Public Schools, the impact of that work on the work of the planning commission, but also being, being cognizant that we're not going to allow them to dictate to Fairfax County Public Schools what they will or will not do. And so it has been a very collaborative effort over time. It wasn't necessarily as, I, I think people have gotten a better appreciation of the role of the various organizations and making sure people collaborate, but also stay in their own lanes. I have one go back, and that is for Ms. Hines.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I wonder, has there been any communication, any PR, any press statement made about this? And I only ask because some of the comments we're making here, comparing brand-new office space, for example, to 25-year-old trailers and quads that kids are in, that kind of cries out for a photo essay, and I think it's the kind of thing that this community really would love, would, would eat up, I think it's news, honestly. So I just wondered, how much PR or communication are we doing around this effort? Do we, you know?
I don't believe there's been any at this point. I don't believe there's been any at this point. This was really the, we were given a task of trying to wrestle out a work plan, and I will say that there has been a recognition by a couple of the Schools Committee Planning Commissioners that have said, "Wow, we need to really raise awareness about the aging facilities of Fairfax County schools."
So I wonder if I could just ask that we do a press release on this joint statement or whatever, I mean, I don't know what that would involve.
Well, I think once we approve this, we could work with the Board of Supervisors and put this out jointly. I think that would be a reasonable thing to talk about. This is something that we're going to work on together, and I think this is something we can simply agree to here today. It doesn't really need to be an agenda item, we can agree to that and --
Right.
That would be my recommendation if the board wishes to do that.
I have one last, and somebody who hasn't spoken yet, so Ms. Huff, and then we'll vote on this.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything until this came up. I have extreme concerns about starting a PR campaign. We have our own glass buildings, we're actually sitting in one, and so I just think that that might not be a place we want to go unless we're going to be talking about our own office buildings that we have staff sitting in. You know, there's just different ways to look at it and talk about it, so.
I would just say, you know, we have two office buildings, pretty much, you know, and the Board of Supervisors, have they finished their brand-new glass tower over there yet? They were just building a brand-new one, and we have a brand-new community center.
So if I could just interject, I don't know that a press release on this would mention any of that, because, you know, we would be talking about the joint work we would be doing.
Right, okay.
And then whatever outgrowth there was from that might be something else, but I think --
I just heard PR on photo essays, and that does not --
Well, I disagree with you, Ms. Huff. I think that is an important message that we need to send to the community. Yeah, we do have a couple of office buildings, but we have priorities, we have priorities as a county that we're really not meeting very well, and I don't think the community understands that.
But I think that that's a conversation we continue to have at these working groups with our counterparts as a coordinated effort, and, you know, it seems to me that they are hearing it and we are working on it, but to go out and attack on a PR campaign, I think is the absolute wrong way to go.
Right, when we're trying to maybe get them to give us -- no.
As Mr. Moon said, we've been having this argument for a long time with that board.
And they gave us a lot of, a big increase last year.
I think we can agree for, we, let's take a vote on support for this plan. All those in favor? Great. And also encourage a statement between the two boards that we are going to be working together on this plan.
And I will follow up with our people and theirs to do that. Thank you, Ms. Corvus-Anders.
Sorry, it took 45 minutes. I apologize.